Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 8th Board Workshop of the Martin County School District. Can we please rise for the saying of the pledge? Ms. Falls, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Moriarty.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here.
Okay, so it's Board Information Share, so I would like to share how proud and honored I am to be in an A school district. And I want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. This was a team effort all the way. It's been seven years since we've had an A in our district. And now we have no schools below a C, which is wonderful. They went up to a C, Pinewood, and hmm, I'm losing my... Warfield went up from Ds to Cs. So congratulations to everyone involved. I want to thank the staff, the administration, the teachers, the students. Everyone did what they needed to do to make this happen, so I want to just thank everyone. I'm really proud. I wish we had a bigger audience today, but I'm really proud and I just wanted to take a moment to say that. So I did hog the mic for the first time, and I'm sorry. Would anyone else like to share anything?
I'd like to say congratulations, too. I am like on cloud nine, and I have been every single time. My husband, when I woke up this morning, he's like, it's whatever happens today, just remember you're an A school district. And I was like, yes, that's right. And it made me smile. It's making me smile every day, and I know how much work everybody put into this. And thank you Superintendent Maine for your leadership. This would not happen without the team that you've built and the teachers and the students and everybody giving 100%. So thank you very, very much. I'm so excited and proud, and I know the work that was done. And everybody knows my heart is in Indian Town because that's where I'm from. But to see Indian Town High School go from a D to an A, I know that is a reflection of their hard work. But I know how much the Martin County School District staff walked beside them over the past year to make that happen. And I can't thank you all enough because they are very excited, too. And I'm excited for them, but I know how much work this school district put into it. So thank you all very much.
And I'm presenting today because some of the board had requested more information on the social media class action lawsuit. As you know from your materials, 44 other school boards in the state of Florida are in this lawsuit. There are 1,700 school districts across the nation that are involved in it. It is currently set for trial in January 2026. The end, so the window where it would be closed to further school boards joining in is probably September. The, this is the litigation about against the major web companies that put out algorithms that engage students and students of the ages where they have access to cell phones. It's against Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, and YouTube. The, this is the second large school district class action lawsuit. The previous one, which you all are aware of, was the Juul lawsuit. That is the one set of history and documentation where we know how it progressed and ultimately how it came out. For those districts that participated, they received substantial amounts of unrestricted funds at the end of the settlement. This case, because of the defendants being a lot larger in size and much larger corporations, who have a much heavier impact on students through the use of their cell phones, is expected to be for a much larger amount should it go to a jury. It's also a complicated case where it is filed in the northern part of California. If there was a jury award in northern California, then parts of the case go into each state where the school districts are to deal with the allocation of any awards. That's separate from if there are appeals. The, based on the Juul litigation, it will likely result in a much larger amount than what would have been for the Martin County School District, 375,000 or so had the district participated. That being said, no lawsuit is ever a known outcome. Or the cost to the district, because the district would be joining it later than most of the other districts. There are already designated lead school districts that are carrying forward the administrative costs, the time of putting together the case. They will receive, if there's a positive outcome, a larger award. For the Martin County School Board, if you all were to join it, you would be like most of the school districts in Florida. It would be for a regular amount of damages, not those where there is a large, heavy administrative burden to participate in the cost. For Martin County, it would be estimated that it would take administrative time of 10 hours that would need to be done before the end of September. And the law firms doing it, the four primary law firms are the same ones who did the Juul litigation, so they're following a similar tract as they move this one forward. The, otherwise, there is no financial cost to the district to participate if you all as a board were to decide to do so. And at the same time, there's no obligation for you all to participate. It's your decision whether you think it would benefit the district. The damages basically reflect what all school districts have encountered as the targeted apps used by students have algorithms to try to create addictive behaviors. And this district, both through the counselors, through the steps you all took to ban cell phones, the administrative staff time, those are the elements of the damages that are being pursued in this lawsuit. But a lawsuit that is a class action by all school districts that choose to participate across the country. And I will certainly answer any questions you have. And I, you all have had the materials, and you previously, for most of you, had the materials related to Juul, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Anyone? There an interest in pursuing this by anyone?
I'm interested.
I wouldn't mind going after it if that's something that the board wanted to do. I feel like those costs could be offset by anything that was won and anything that we receive, because it's not restricted, could go towards our mental health as well.
Yeah, just to put a little more of a point on that. Yeah, I mean, I think unequivocally, we should be a part of this lawsuit, honestly. Social media has been very detrimental to our kids, causing mental health crises, addictive behavior, not to mention bullying through cyberbullying. I think this is, it doesn't cost us anything. It's a win or get nothing type scenario. And like Ms. Russell said, we could put this money to good use. We could use it for mental health counselors. We could use it for after-school programs to get kids off of these devices and back into, into real life. So I would love to see us be a part of this. Thanks.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. George, there is the chance that we would be a district that would be selected for trial, in which case we would have discovery and we would have more administrative time?
The Martin County School District will not be one of the ones. They've already been selected. They're, those key firms have already been chosen. Yes.
Okay. I'm not interested. I'm not interested in, I can understand that there's an issue with social media, et cetera. I have the same feeling that I had before, that we're better off dealing with our issues locally and internally and coming up with processes, et cetera, to try to solve our problem locally and to not be counting on, I feel that we live in a litigious society where people like to sue for anything, and it looks like it's free money out there. I think at the end of the day, it's not free money, and I'm not interested.
So I think I have kind of the same mindset as I had about the Juul litigation. I don't, I don't, I don't think that we should be going after free money just because it's free money. I'd like to know what was the outcome of the Juul settlement for those school districts that did get money? Did it stop kids from vaping? It's, to me, it's, it's the litigious society that we live in. It's a group of attorneys that have decided to form this class action lawsuit. And if, if the results were that vaping is banned, or it's not, it's not about changing the policy. If this was about changing policy, this was about doing away with those algorithms. If we knew that that was going to happen, but we know it's not. It's just like the Juul lawsuit. It's, yes, it could be some, some sort of, we should, we could get some sort of settlement. But where, what's going to change in social media? What, what is going to change, or what are we going to be able to do with that money that would solve the problem or help make the problem better? Or, you know, benefit children? Other than, oh yeah, we'll get $375,000 of unrestricted dollars because a group of attorneys decided to use school districts as a pawn in their class action. Because yes, of course, everybody loves kids and we want to protect them. And I think that's what we're doing in the Martin County School District. Now, if it was going to ban social media and there was going to be something policy-wise, I would say 100% I would want to participate. But just as a money grab, I'm not, I don't, I don't know. I don't know that that's the, what we should go after. It's just, just because there's money tied to it. And if there is going to be, and the school district does want to pursue this, or the school board wants to pursue this, I would want to know exactly what we're going to spend the money on. I don't want to say, well, we could do this, or we might do this, or it could go into our fund balance, or it could... If we're going to file, be a part of a lawsuit that is because of the results of social media, then we better put it to use in that, for that problem. Not just to grab money to use for other things.
Well, to Ms. Powers, I think it sends a message. And had we been involved in the Juul lawsuit, I think that sends a message to the vaping companies that it's not okay to have deceptive advertising to get kids hooked on vaping. And we have a huge problem with that in this county. And for this, this sends a message that the Martin County School District is not okay with what the social media companies are doing. And yes, there's money tied to it, but I just offered several things that we could spend the money on, which I would be okay with earmarking things before. But I personally think that I want to send this message that it is not okay what is going on in the social media world, and that the Martin County School District stands for something, and that we're not going to just not be a part of this. There's other local counties that are involved, Palm Beach, Okeechobee. I'd like to stand with them and say enough is enough. And I think that that would bring change, especially when these companies have to settle or go to court over this.
So I guess my question would be, what changed from school districts getting money from those companies, from Juul? What changed from the monetary settlement, policy-wise, across the nation for all the school districts that participated? I'd like to see those results. And if, if it, something monumental happened because they joined the lawsuit and got paid, I would say absolutely. If we saw policy changes, if we saw that it sent a message to our community that this lawsuit changed minds, that parents got more involved, that children's, it sent a message to children to not vape? I just would like to know what changed? Other than they got a financial penalty, because they didn't stop selling Juuls?
Mr. George, maybe, or we could look into that. I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know that the advertising by the companies that promote vaping has been changed as a result of the litigation. I can come back to the board after talking with Joel Wright for more specifics on that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I am torn because we go after grants all the time. That's free money, too, basically. And yes, it is helping children and programming, et cetera. But I also feel that, I agree with Dr. Moriarty, that it does send a message that we walk our talk. We stopped allowing cell phones. We're putting parameters and things in place to keep kids from abusing social media. And I think it's important that we do send the message. So I am in favor, but I also respect the Juul. I'd like to know more about that. And if the verbiage changed so that they're not able to purchase them, or there's less Juul activity, if you will, then that would be something I would be in favor with. So I just wanted to place my comment that I would be interested, but I would like more information as well.
And I don't think it's the same as going after a grant. Because I think when you're going, when you're applying for a grant, it's for something, you're getting money, and it's for something very specific. So if it's a reading grant, it's for reading, or if it's for an ELL grant. It's, but it's a very specific use, targeted use of money that somebody is looking at, that's saying this is something that will solve an issue or will address an issue. So whatever the grant is, I think that that's completely different. And I, I think that, my feeling as far as the Juul thing, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing the information. But I don't see that the use, since that lawsuit, since those settlements have been paid, I don't see the use of vaping has been gone down. I don't see the use of, you know, I think it's the companies that got sued that made the settlement, in this case Juul. When you get hit with a class action, it's a cost of doing business, and they just pay it out and they move on. And, you know, I think it's, it's one thing to say we stand for something. And I believe that, yes, we should stand for harmful social media for children. But I don't believe that the message should be, we're standing for this, where's my money? I think the way you stand for something is by our internal policy, our local policy, and being able to say, yes, we think that this is harmful for children. We think that this shouldn't be done, and we're going to institute policy, and we're going to institute procedures that take care of our children when they're in our control. We're going to say, no cell phones in a school. This is the policy that we're adopting. We're going to follow that policy. We're going to see if that policy has any meaningful results. And whether you want to use, I mean, the, the last piece of data that I just looked at was the out-of-school suspension rates. And I see that, okay, maybe in the last year, that helped contribute to that, to a 34% decrease in the out-of-school suspension. Probably did have something to do with, or some tie to do with the ability to be able to say, we're not going to have cell phones in the school, and we're going to require children to be more, students to be more engaged when they're in school. So I mean, I think there's a number, number of factors. But I mean, I think that, I, I think that, and I, and I don't have any problems saying that I, as a member of a Martin County School District, do believe that social media is harmful to children and their access is harmful, et cetera. But, but to tie it to the money, I, I just feel is, it's almost disingenuous to me, unless you can really see some result. And I agree with Mrs. Powers that if you're going to say, okay, whatever we get, this is what we're going to do. But I think we, as a board, ought to understand what it is we're planning on doing. I mean, and, and I don't think that it is specific to, if you're getting money from a lawsuit that has, something that has to do with social media, what would you tie it to that has something to do with social media? We would, we would ban the use of social media in our schools? So, so then we would say we're going to add X number of counselors, just general mental health counselors? Because the social, like, how does that directly tie to social media? Throwing, getting, I don't want to say throwing, allocating money towards mental health. How does that, what does that do for social media? I mean, we have a, we have a mental health plan, a mental wellness plan. It's a robust plan. It has some funding from the state. We also have a plan further than what the state offers that has a lot of community partners in there that goes really pretty far as to what we're doing in which, in a very organized plan, as to which gaps we're filling, for which type of activity we're targeting, to which type of interventions we're offering, for what age level for children. So we have this rather robust plan that sits in, sits there. And it, I'm curious as to, from the mental health people in the room, that if you were told, here, if I were to give you half a million dollars to help alleviate or to mitigate the danger or the harm that social media has done to children, what would you add to the mental health plan in order to do that? And then how would you sustain that? I mean, if you're going to add it, you know, would you blow it all in one year? Would you try to spread it over five years? Would we do it over two years? Quarter of a million dollars over two years? And then we're going to absorb it into the general fund? And then we're, I mean, I don't see, I just see a lot of questions and not a lot of answers. Thank you.
So I, I also had just a quick comment about the grant. Just, I know we apply for a lot of grants, and I know that all of these administrators could speak to the accountability that comes with that. There are very specific outcomes. There are very specific things that, when you apply for a grant, you are accountable to that funder for certain things. Certain, it could be a lot of different measurables that are used. And if we are going to just ask for money to combat a problem that exists, then we need to have a plan with targeted outcomes to address social media. Like, not just to say, we're going to have, now we're going to have half a million dollars of unrestricted dollars. Because that moves the, that does nothing to alleviate the problem of social media. The same way that paying school districts, dual-paying school districts didn't alleviate the problem of kids vaping, or even adults vaping, or anybody vaping, for that matter. So it's just, I don't know. I think philosophically, I think that we, we should be very careful when we enter into lawsuits that... And I didn't even think, honestly, thank goodness, Ms. Roberts, in her long-term thinking, is how would we sustain something once we get it started? You know, if, if we did add counselors, or we add things that are recurring expenses over years, we're going to run out of money, and then that will have to be absorbed by the general fund. So those are just a lot of things to think about, depending on how, when we do vote on this, however the board goes. I want, I would really like to see us come up with some way, things that we would, some action, an actionable plan with outcomes and expectations using those dollars.
Just so you know, I was reacting to the free money.
I know.
Part of it, okay?
Nothing's free.
And I would maybe say that if we do go down the path, maybe Dr. Estevez could put something down that kind of targets everything that's been set up here, is where would that money go? And is it sustainable? Because if it isn't sustainable, it's not, it's not, it's not a good idea for us to promise money in the future that we don't have. But I would like to know if, if the superintendent has any comments at all. Do you have any feelings one way or the other?
Well, I...
I don't want to put you on the spot. I just...
No, I, I want a plan. We, we can't just, even if we were to, if the board was to agree to move forward with it, and we knew that there was possibility to receive money, we need to, we need to know what to do with it. So what I would like for our team to do is come together and figure out what is our plan of action? How would we move forward? And then what would be the long-term sustainability after the money runs out? So that we're able to present that to the board, and you're able to make a, use that additional information to make a decision.
Well, and I'd like to understand, too, any restrictions that the money would, if we were to get a settlement, would there be any restrictions as a school district? You know, because we may not want to take on the issue. We may want to partner with someone else, like maybe the county, that they're the ones with the power to create a local ordinance, some sort of, I don't know what they could do. I'm thinking of vaping. They probably can't, I don't even know what you would do with social media. It's such a behemoth of an issue, and so everybody carries their computer around in their hand now. How, how do we, other than banning cell phones during the time that we have children in the care of the school district? I don't know what, what else we can do. Can we do a, a media campaign? Can we do, can we partner with the Sheriff's Department? Like, I'm just thinking of ways that it would be a short-term, you know, blitz, if you will, to get the message out to the community. I don't know. But I don't think that we, as the school district, should take on this responsibility by ourselves. Now, if we get money, and we can elaborate, but, I mean, just some ideas if we do, if the board, when the board votes on this.
Thank you.
Adam Chair.
Yeah, just to respond to Ms. Powers, the public awareness campaign definitely jumps out in my mind because that's a short-term thing that does not have to be long-term sustainable, but that could get the message out. But I also like reaching out to our students, maybe forming some kind of a committee. But I also like reaching out to our students, maybe forming some kind of a committee and, and seeing where they're on it, and say, hey, if you had this much money to spend, like, how could we change this world? How could we get a better message out there? So I think what Ms. Robertson, uh, Mrs. Powers say i- is, uh, is great advice. And, uh, I'd love to see what we can come back with, uh, on that front.
So, like, kind of just to recap. Mr. George, you're gonna, you're gonna find out the Juul term, the, what, what changed in the language for selling from, from your contact, correct? And then at the next, I'm looking, thinking in time. I've asked Dr. Estevez to put something together. Perhaps that could be presented at the August workshop? And if you could get the information to us by the August workshop? And then by the regular meeting, we could, we could make a decision. Because we do have a timeframe, I think September, September. So, and I'm being hypothetical. If we make the decision to go ahead with it, I wanted to have everything laid out prior so we had all our ducks in a row. Ms. Roberts?
Um, yes, and if Mr. George can grab any stats that have to do with Juul vaping going down for the districts that received the money.
I will seek that information.
Thank you. Um, Chandra at CSC might be able to help you with that.
We're going to discuss committees while you're waiting here. I wish it stayed on longer, kind of, it's like every, all right. All right.
Mine did the same thing.
Now it says the password's incorrect. I apologize for the wait. Okay. So we are now going to discuss committees. You all have, all the committees in front of you, I hope, that are listed. And I would like to open up the conversation. Does anybody want to make any comments? I am looking to see if maybe some of these committees no longer are necessary. So we'll start there. Does anyone have anything they want to say about any of the committees?
When I looked at the list, it's in the, this is a description of the list of ones that are in, in our policy.
Correct.
Not, like, we have additional ones that are statutory, like Children's Services Council is statutory. Honestly, there are multiple, it, um, there's, the Health Department has, um, Community Health has one that's, um, oh, maybe that's the School Health Advisory Committee. Um, I know the school district gets appointments on various boards by statute. It doesn't necessarily, like, it doesn't have to be the superintendent or a school board member, but it could be, um, the superintendent would appoint someone to certain committees. And, I mean, school, school board members can serve on them. But, um, so this is just, uh, to me, just a shortlist. We have a lot of others. But one of the things that I wanted to mention was, I kind of think we need to change when we assign the committees. I think it should be the beginning of the school year. Because I don't think that, I think November, you're, you start a committee, like, um, the Boundary Advisory Committee, or, not that we have had that one, or the Insurance Committee starts meeting in August and you're talking negotiations, and you have all those issues. But you're kind of, have one board member in August to November, and then you have another board member from December. So I would like to see us go to assigning those committees before the school year starts. So if it cha, switches up to July, um, you know, I think that's probably good, or August, our August meeting. That way you're in for a whole school year, as opposed to, um, you know, November to Septem-
I, I agree with that.
So, um, I think that works for the eight committees that are the school district committees. So that works for the eight that are listed here. For the other ones, Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, Education Foundation, Council for the Arts, Clark Management Advisory Board, actually, that one would probably work with the school year too. But the Children's Services Council, I think those other ones should go on the calendar of that group. So for instance, if Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, if they're operate, well, I don't know what year they operate under. I do, I do know that, um, Children's Services operates on a calendar year. So, I mean, I, I think that, um, the ones that aren't under our control, we should probably be doing it. And I, I don't think it's unusual, because we have the Value Adjustment Board that comes out of sequence at the same time. So, I mean, I think that, um, I don't think they all need to be done on a set time for a calendar year, for these are the committees that are for 2025. I think you could have them rolling, depending on when the piece is.
Well, like, I can speak to Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments. I think, um, July or August are, is perfectly acceptable because they're end of the year, they kind of wrap everything up. Um, most of the municipalities operate on a, um, I think their budget year is typically not the same as ours. I, I think they may go October, like, the, um, CSC goes October 1st to September 30th is their year.
That's their year, but their governance year goes by the calendar year. So for example, their officers are voted in, and they, chairs and everything have the calendar year where they're doing something, so. To not be disruptive to the underlying group, I mean, it's.
I think it's going to be hard, because, um, the same thing can be, like, when you have a group like that that has, like, governor appointees, it's disruptive when the governor finally appoints, because they're coming in at different times during that year too. So I think for us, I think we should make a plan that works best for us as a school board. And the rest will kind of fall into place. Because, um, like, the, I know for, like, the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, I, I think it's an ideal time for somebody to step in. They're getting ready to have their end of year barbecue in July that you guys are all invited to. It's in Okeechobee, it's amazing. They have a really great turnout of local elected officials. Um, if our state, um, officials are in town, they usually come, they do, like, prime rib. And this, they started adding chicken, and, um, they.
And it's free.
And it's free. And they love to have, and they usually have a guest speaker. And sometimes they're really funny, like, they had a cowboy comedian roping guy. It was kind of fun, way to wrap up the year and everybody, more of a social time. So please, I think everybody got an invitation to that, right? Did you guys get the invitation? All right.
I did not.
I'll send it to you guys, because I think the RSVP is coming up soon.
I went last year, it was great.
Yeah, it's really a fun, it's a fun event. And the food is out of this world. Um, so back to the committees.
Problems finding and appointing a chair and a vice chair based on who is on the council and who is staying on the council. So when they get a government appointee, they know how many years that appointee's going to be, be there. So there is the issue sometimes with, okay, well, you're rolling off in March. So since you're rolling off in March, we need to be cognizant that you're leaving in March. But I mean, I know that.
If, if that's the only one that has an issue, I think we can, we can accommodate it.
Well, and the only reason, and, and I can understand if somebody else wants to do it. But right now, for the year of 2025, I am the chair of the Children's Services Council. So obviously, if I were to roll off, not that this would happen this year, but if I were to roll off and we started with new appointees, it puts them in a position where now they're, they're down governor appointees, et cetera. They've got to look around and try to figure out how they're going to fill that. The vice chair's got to move up. Now they've got to find a vice chair from the limited people. And it's, it's not just that piece of it. It has to do with a whole lot of other things that they're doing at the same time, but. I, I just think that since we're doing value adjustment on an off calendar, that it, that it doesn't matter if we have to do some of them in an off calendar, instead of trying to make it fit to what our vision looked like. Because I think our vision at some point was, we'll do it for a calendar year. Let's do it for this calendar year. We get new board people in, in a November. We'll ask them in the first part of December, what committees do you want to be on? Um, we'll gather all that up, and then it's announced in December that they'll start in January for their new committee. I mean, it's.
Well, I think you have other issues, like the Code of Conduct, the District Advisory Council, um, the Head Start Policy Board, those are meeting throughout the year. And to change those up, uh, in January is.
Oh, I think that all of those that have to do with the district count, that, that have to do, the eight that go with the district, that are district committees, should go on a district calendar. I agree with that completely, so that you're not changing those mid-year. I also think, before I forget it, I also think that the strategic plan should be a strategic plan, the same way that we're doing budget, where it's the entire board that's, that's dealing with the strategic plan. It's not a stra, I mean, if you, a strategic plan is supposed to be coming from the governance board. It isn't an employee-driven, um, artifact of work. So in doing that, when you have a strategic plan committee out there meeting with one person from the board representing the board and, and not really representing, because the way the policy is written, they're not really interacting, they're there as an observer, they're, you know, I mean, it's all those other things. So you have the strategic plan committee coming up with a body of work and then presenting it to the board, whereas really, the, the vision is, what do, I mean, I look at all the five of us and figure, when you decided you wanted to be a school board member, what were your goals? And what were the things that, what were your ideas that you wanted to change? What was the change you were looking for? What was the piece that you were looking to make the district better? And what did you, what was your platform for running? Why did you decide to seek this office? And that's really all part of what goes into the strategic plan of a governance board, as to these are the components of what it is you're looking for. Whether it's more parental involvement, whether it's, um, less outside influ, you know, whatever the pieces were, it's those pieces that should be in the strategic plan. So I think the strategic plan really needs to be owned back by the school board. And needs to be the discussion that the school board is making, that this is what we want to do for a strategic plan, and this is what we're pointing at. And it's not driven by some outside committee.
Well, I, I kind of think that that's, um, I mean, it's been a while since the Strategic Planning Committee has met. I can't, do you know when the last time the committee met?
Well, I, I'm glad you brought it up, um, because we are shifting. We, we are moving away from Cognia. We were not getting out of Cognia what we believed we needed to be getting out of Cognia. So we have since notified Cognia that they will be with us only for accreditation. Um, and you will begin to see a shift in work with the strategic plan um, in the upcoming weeks and months, um, that we will align with our Studer work. And we will absolutely get with Kathy Orapalo, who is, who is our consultant through Studer, to be able to shift and realign with board, um, expectations and vision of the board um, and goals moving forward for, for '25, '26. That's not a problem. The timing is right, is, I guess, is what I'm saying, to be able to do that. Um, the committees have been meeting, um, but you have not had an update in the fashion that we would have liked for you to have, because we're not getting the type of results that we would like out of the Cognia way of work, if, if, if I'm being completely honest and transparent. There's no reason to waste your time or our time to present something that's not giving us what we're looking for. So we're shifting, and I, I hear you, and I hear the board.
And I ju, you know, and I just kind of feel like, um, the strategic plan, so let's go back to budget. We used to have a committee that was a budget committee, and there used to be one person on the board when I first started, that was appointed to this budget committee. So you had one out of five that really understood what was going on with the money. And the rest of them were like, well, I'm counting on you to take, kind of take care of that. But if you go back to what our statutory duty is, it's policy and budget. And so it, it really isn't the, the duty responsibility or the, um, the whim of one board member to be driving what the budget looks like. It really should be a budget that involves everybody. So then, that was when the change was made to, no, 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 we're going to do a budget committee meeting, we're going to do budget workshops, we're going to do it completely different. Now, there are other districts that are still doing it where the budget is pretty much owned by the staff and by the superintendent. And then at the end of the budget period, it's kind of like, here's your budget, you know? Have a good time. If you have any questions, call up the guy over there and he'll explain it to you, because, you know? But this is the budget that we're looking for you to approve. And, and there are districts that are doing that. And I think that in Martin County, we've done something different, and we've taken more ownership. And I look to the Essor and ARP money, as to how we handle the Essor and ARP money, where instead of, as some districts did, including Charlotte, where it was kind of like a staff-driven, here's your, here's your millions of dollars, you staff figure out what you're going to do with it and report back to the board. And things happened in other districts where money was being spent and funds were, projects were started and then were stopped because the money ran out. Um, and then you had board members on those other boards, like, what are we doing that for? That had no idea what was going on with Essor and ARP. Well, the way we handled Essor and ARP in Martin County was, no, 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 there's, the board is going to own it, because the board is the one that's responsible for the money. And so we, we're going to do it with the spreadsheet method, where we're going to look at everything. We're going to decide which are the priorities, which aren't the priorities, that type of thing. So we've taken, in Martin County, we've taken more control over the money aspect of the district than most other districts in the state of Florida, which I think is a very good thing. I think that increases transparency, it increases our individual understanding, our understanding as a board of where we're going with the money and what we're doing with it. And I think the same thing is true of the strategic plan. I think the strategic plan needs to be something that, so, um, needs to be back. So whatever that policy 9075 is, I think needs to be reworked, and the strategic plan needs to be given back to the board. And it doesn't become a, a, a work of employees. Because one of the things that I've noticed, and I don't know whether Marcia noticed this, Mrs. Powers noticed this, but from time to time, you would see, you would know an employee and you would know what they wanted to work on. And somehow or other, that found its way into the strategic plan, which was kind of like, a little bit sus, where you were like, I don't really understand what's going on here, where, you know, I know that you really like this, and that somehow found its way. And, oh, no, no, you know, the committee decided that this was a good thing to do. And, you know, it was this big, but it was kind of like, mm, I don't know about that. So I really think that that's, um, that 9075 policy needs to be redone.
So I agree with you on the, um, that I think that it has to come back to, you know, the board should be involved. And we typically were in the past, but it was in the first year one. And, um, now that we have our buy-in at, at district-wide on truly using data, um, we should be meeting annually based on and talking about our data, just the same as you do with DataComms on, um, the granule, granular school level and classroom level. We, as a board, should be talking about that at the district level. And we should be doing it annually, not wait, not create a plan based on the data of '24, '25, going into '25, '26. But we should be constantly evaluating the data. And if we wanted set data points, that we want to take a look, because now we have so much, we have better data faster with progress monitoring. So, I mean, it typically, truly could probably happen three times a year, where we're coming together, the superintendent's still doing his part. But then that comes back to us as a district and saying, oh my goodness, look how, you know, PM 1 is kind of hard, but by PM 2, we should be meeting again and talking about it, and what the results are, and what we're seeing, what are going to be the strategies, what investments do we need to make in certain, um, certain activities, things, um, staff. what investments do we need to make in certain, certain activities, things, staff, whatever we need to do. By PM two, we should be looking at that and knowing the trajectory of where students and achievement are going. And then PM three, obviously reflecting on what we did after PM two, how it impacted PM three and then what we need to do in the following year. So we should be meeting multiple times.
I think we should be after, after the PM two.
After PM two.
After that comes out and then after the PM three for a longer, like a, like call PM two a pivot meeting and then PM three a planning meeting for what were the successes, what were the challenges? What do we need to do different for the next year to set those things up in place? So as we go into the next year, we're doing that. So I, I see it.
What worked, what didn't work?
Yeah.
Did you, all right, thank you, Madam Chair. So as a newer board member, I just wanted to offer a little perspective because I got elected in November and then we kind of talked about this in December. And when you first get elected and now there's term limits, every one of us is going to go through, there'll be new people always coming on here. It's a little overwhelming to be, to say here, you know, pick which committees you want to be a part of when I've heard of some of them, some of them honestly I hadn't even heard of or, or knew what they did. So there's some research that has to be done there. When they meet, this is a great thing Mr. Roberts gave us, so we know kind of when the meetings are, but that could always change. Could it even fit into my schedule? And then I remember putting a few committees down and I got almost none of them. So again, I, I'm glad we brought this up. I'm glad the chair added this because it's good to talk about this and to kind of understand the process of it. Because as a newer person, it's kind of hard to break through and get on to some of these things that maybe a more seasoned board member has established themselves on a certain thing, whether it be a chamber or a board or whatever. So I like Mrs. Powers' idea of doing it on the calendar year because if I got elected in November and then I have kind of the year to look at things and, and it was with, you know, around, around the school year time. I mean, it gives you some time to breathe and to do your homework and say what you're interested in. And then the only other question I have is going forward is, you know, how does a newer board member break free and get into some of these committees that, I don't know if it needs more experience or the right connections or what to be able to serve on a committee that maybe I have some interest in? And then the only other thing I want to add to that is the school calendar committee. I don't know if we really need that committee. I feel like our staff probably does a good enough job that that we could just nix. So I know the question was, do we need all these? That one, I think we could do without and just rely on our wonderful staff to guide us there.
So I think, I think there are several committees that we should talk about that are in policy that we might need, that we might be able to do away with. To your point, Dr. Moriarty, about coming as a new board member and I think we do need to have more discussion. I think we need to have, I've seen other boards, like for example, the county. They, as a board, the list comes up, you put your preferences, but there's discussion among the board members about, well, you know, I want, I want the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments. I've been doing it for so many years and you want it. Like, okay, how, let's talk about it. If you really want that and you really, you've, I, I, I think we should talk about it as a group and say, well, here, have it, or whatever, you know, whatever that is. I think that we should have that conversation instead of us. And it's hard being at the chair and saying, oh, you're trying to put every, give everybody something that they wanted, but somebody always doesn't get something that they really wanted. So I think by us having that discussion and you being passionate about whatever it is, the committee that you want and why you want it, and then we can decide as a group what those committees look like.
Can we discuss the calendar committee? Because I am in agreement, I don't think it's a necessary committee.
But, well, I think the discussion is bringing that policy back, right?
That's what we would like to know. If, if you can go through, Madam Chair, which ones that you can give staff direction, the board can give staff direction on which policies to bring back for a formal vote with tweaks to the policies. That's what we're looking for today. And then when you would like the committees to be selected, July, August, I heard. And then whether or not, I heard Dr. Moriarty request, as long with Mrs. Powers, there to be discussion as part of that process. So when we come forward in July and August for committee selections, that there would be a formal workshop for discussion and kind of who's going to be on what committees and then staff will solidify that. So that's, we're just kind of.
And I guess my question would be, do we have to, do we just have to have consensus on who's going to be on the committee? Or do we actually have to vote on that? Because I think those committee assignments, I, I don't know that we, as long as we have consensus among the group, do we really need to vote on that? But we could do that at a workshop.
So let's take the hypothetical where someone doesn't want what they've been assigned. You're asking if the rest of us have to get consensus so that person either doesn't get what they want or they do get what they want. That, to me, is a little bit unknown. I'm not objecting, I'm just saying, I'll use myself, I'm on the Arts Council and Jen would like to be on the Arts Council. I don't want to give it up. So the three of you have to decide consensus that Jen gets it and, and I don't. And again, that's a totally hypothetical situation, but is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, you have the discussion amongst yourselves and you say, hey, you are going to, you're going to justify why you need to stay on the count, on that, the Arts Council. And I just, and you're going to talk to your peer and say, I know you said you wanted it, but let me just explain to you why I want it, why I would like to stay on it. And then, you know, have an off-ramp or whatever and I think we can, we're all very reasonable.
I want to be clear that.
I wouldn't override the, I wouldn't override the two of you, whatever you decide. That's what I'm saying. Nobody's going to say, oh, no.
So the decision comes between the two people and then if, what if they don't agree?
And we all have to decide who it's going to be.
Okay, so there is an element of the rest of the board decides which committees people are going to be on in that, in that situation.
Well, the whole entire board, yes, is involved in that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make it clear. And just in that vein, are there any other committees that are listed here that anyone feels could be excised? Policy brought back and I just want to, I want to clean things up in case there's anything on here that is either no longer required or, Lee? Thank you, save.
I think the Boundary Advisory Committee. I think that any of these are public meetings anyway. So that if we knew that there was nobody assigned to the bound-, you know, and I don't even know whether that's a staff function or what, but the board ultimately makes that decision at the end of the day anyway. So I think as long as staff is dealing with it and then the staff brings it back, I think the only reason that you're having a committee is so perhaps you're having, and I guess Boundary Advisory is one, is Boundary Advisory one that board members appoint people to?
Yes.
So that way you're having some community input as to what they think boundaries should be. But as far as a board member going to the Boundary Advisory Committee, it used to be Mike Teacher-Leezy all the time, remember?
We don't have Boundary Advisory.
Yes, because we don't know, they never met, so that was why it was Mike. But I kind of feel like it doesn't need a board member on the Boundary Advisory Committee. I kind of feel like if staff ran it and listened to the input of what the, you know, so we all appoint somebody to it, they all go meet together and come back with their piece, but the board is ultimately deciding anyway. So I think that that's one that the board doesn't need to have somebody on.
Yeah, I think all these policies should quite honestly come back to us and let us look at it, talk about it as a group. If it's referenced in a policy. But then there are, again, I think the School Health Advisory Committee, like maybe, we may have a policy, it may reference that, but it's also in statute.
I think that one's in statute and I think the Head Start Policy Board is also in, in.
Children's Services Council is in statute.
I don't think the Code of Conduct is in statute. So I think the Code of Conduct, the same way we could appoint people to go to those meetings, et cetera, but then at the end of the day, instead of it being a mere, here's your Code of Conduct, which we've got, we've transitioned from, here's the Code of Conduct, committee's met, you guys just need to approve it, to a more robust discussion among the board of what the Code of Conduct booklet, handbook is going to look like and the board has more input on it. So in that case, when we're doing that, if I were on the Code of Conduct Committee, I would feel like I've wasted all my time going to that Code of Conduct Committee meeting because we've all got to discuss it anyway. So I kind of feel like that one doesn't need a, a board person going to, to that one. The same way I don't think the Boundary Committee needs a board person to go to that. District Advisory Council, I don't know if that's statutory.
I think it is.
School Board Policy, 2140.
But is it, is it driven by statute? Because we can change a policy, but I don't know if it's driven by statute.
I mean, on the DAC policy, it does list three different statutes. They are listed on the actual policy. I did want to make one comment about something that Dr. Moriarty said earlier about coming on in November and then kind of needing some time to breathe. And I totally understand that. However, one thing we have to think of is when someone comes on, that means someone just left. So that means there's a vacancy and all those, and those need to be filled. So say we have, you know, someone sitting on DAC. If someone now has left and someone who's coming on, I feel like that new person does need to fill that shoe for the, until the next August when we. Yes, however we work this out and we can discuss it, but what, you know, whatever happens. But someone does need to fill that, so you don't, I understand it's tough when you come on.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking more of like you would just automatically get where, whatever you guys decided in September, whoever gets on just automatically gets what that person you're replacing is. And then when the first time you give input would be like the following September or, you know, or August when the school year begins, was my thought, but yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so recap time. We're going to bring these back for discussion. And possibly some might be eliminated, but the discussion will take place and we'll see where that takes us.
Well, and I guess too, like on that whole, like the Arts Council, now that you've brought that one up, like is that something that they asked us to do or is it something? So do we even need to appoint someone? Do they just need to seek out a, a member? Yeah, like so do we need to appoint that person or? Okay. Okay, so any, anything that we have that, if we can do a little research on each of those and why that, why they're on the list? And then we can figure out if they need to still be on the list or not.
Statute, what is policy, what is not, we got you.
All right, does anyone else have any comments regarding that? Okay, it is now open to the board. Anyone have anything?
I have one thing.
Um, by the way, we're in A District.
I do have.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, because Mrs. Powers inspired me. I, I was crunching some numbers. We are 64 points away from getting into the top four. So we scored 785 points. The fourth highest scoring district was 849. That puts us 64 points away. That's very doable. Of course, these are adjusting and moving every year as other districts try to move. But there were six school districts in the entire state and I know that you all are aware of this, but I want the, the public to know, six school districts that moved a letter grade. We were one of those and we were the number one district in the highest number of points of those six to move. Very, very proud of that. Throughout the 67 districts, there were 28 A districts, 31 B districts and 8 C districts. So it is a huge, huge feat and that, that we were able to overcome for the district. And, and I appreciate the board's support and what was said about district staff and our teachers and our principals. But we have C schools in the district and I'm well aware of that and so is staff because I think one of the first things I said for next school year, when we were anticipating maybe becoming an NA, was that our goal is to have no C schools. That's big, but it's doable. We have six of them and we will do everything we can in this upcoming school year to make sure that we are maximizing and getting those 64 points, as many as we can, but that we're doing right by students first and foremost and that we're making sure that those C schools are getting the adequate support they need to become Bs. We can do it and I appreciate the, the support that was given by the board this entire year for our team to be able to pull this off, so thank you.
A very fragile system. It can change in a minute. I'll guess.
So Superintendent Maine, in, in saying that for those six schools, so let's say our focus is on those six. Obviously, we don't want anybody to slide at the same time. So there may be somebody that adds to that six. But would it be helpful if on a regular basis you gave us information about those six and whatever special needs or special assets you need allocated to that? So we can make a conscious decision and, and it isn't a matter of plugging things and trying to have those. But if it becomes a public conversation and it becomes something where, you know, look, if we could get at school XYZ, if we could sit there and if we could hire this many reading people to come in and do this, or this many, whatever it is, we think it would make a big impact. I think that would be something that the board would be interested in, willing to entertain, right? So I think instead of it putting it, I mean, I know that you're the operations person, et cetera, but since we're the ones holding the purse strings, I mean, I kind of feel like if you, if, if we had it as a regularly scheduled thing for those six, plus whatever you need, may need to add to it, if we knew that, okay, this is doing fine, they're on track. This one's falling a little bit off track, getting a little bit behind. We think if we allocated money and did XYZ or did something different there, we would be able to pivot more quickly rather than leaving the whole burden on you.
I would love that and this is a partnership. This is not a me or us and you, this is together. This is why we're successful and why I love this board. And being in the district, I have had conversation with Executive Director Gifford, who's overseeing school improvement to give regular updates to the board. We've been in discussions about that. And I think it is a perfect opportunity for us to have those presentations to you to say, this is what is needed as we tier our schools and as we're tiering support for our principals because we do have some newer principals. They're all going to need to be tiered, some of them at schools that are RC schools. And so you will see regular updates in those requests because I do think if we can strategically give those schools a little extra, we can get them over the finish line.
And along those same lines, the discussion I had with you yesterday that had to do with targeted professional development. So I think that included in that discussion, if you have staff members, et cetera, in those six schools or whatever that number becomes, that need a targeted development or targeted training in a certain area, that it, it would be something that, instead of it say, instead of becoming a, it would be suggested and good for you to do this, if it became something that was more board-driven, that, no, 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 this is a priority and this needs to be done in the next month because we need this to happen. So we're getting from A to B. I think that that puts a lot more meat behind it and shows the support of the board to that school. So I mean, I think in doing the finance piece, if we can also add a professional development as appropriate into that, that would be helpful too. Thank you.
Well, and I think a big piece of that, that, you know, we talk about it a lot in the early learning world is paying our teachers to participate in professional development so that, it's expensive. So if they're going to miss a day in the classroom, you're paying a substitute and you're paying the teacher. We, so we have to be really targeted in what professional development that we are offering so that we see those benefits right away in the classroom. So I 100% support that.
I have one item to discuss. It is an invitation from the Florida. It is an invitation from the Florida Greater Consortium. They want us to come back. It's $3,000 a year, they meet four times a year and I am just opening it up if anyone has an interest to rejoin.
I have no interest in rejoining. I think that there's a couple of things. One is, I think it's, at one point in time, they were able to give us some access. I think that the access that they can give us, we could manage on our own. I also think that, that we are different than any other school district in the state of Florida. That the way that we're operating, the way that we're looking at things is completely different than what all the other ones are doing. And I don't believe that we need to be joining hands and being congenial, even though we should be congenial. I don't believe that there's any real benefit to doing that. I think the FSBA trainings are good, but I think as far as what we would get from the consortium, I think what we're, what they get, are getting from us becomes a bigger piece because then they can say they have the whole wraparound for the state, for the coastal counties and then their numbers of how many FTE and how much the tax base is becomes a bigger number. But I don't think the $3,000 is worth it. I think it's just, we should continue on the way we're doing.
So, I would agree with that. I think that for the newer board members that were never a part of that consortium and, you know, one of the things that I found is that I felt like they led with different values than what the Martin County School District and the Martin, our Martin County constituents expect. I don't think that the $3,000 was worth it. They, I thought the best thing was the day in the legislature day because they did do a good job of bringing a lot of legislators in front of us. Not as many decision-makers as we have now in the legislature and locally. So, I'm not interested. I think that we're in a good place. I don't know that they bring value to what we're doing here in Martin County. So, I would agree with Ms. Roberts to not move forward with that.
I'd either.
I'm on board. I'm with you guys. You have a lot more history than I do with them.
Decision made, decision made.
I bow to your knowledge there.
Well, that concludes our meeting.